Like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five will begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes before us to be reviewed for next week for action. If there's any questions, now would be a time to ask, but I don't believe we have any. We'll move forward to executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Hagerty.
On Monday, November tenth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding county finances. On Wednesday, November twelfth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or lease of real property, insurance, personnel matters, and county finances.
Any questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation on agenda items only. This is for agenda items of the Commissioners' hearing only. Three-minute cap, we are live-streamed. Anyone for seeing none? We'll move to Election Board. I'll hand the gavel to my colleague.
Yes, I'd like to call it to order the Election Board meeting for Wednesday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. The first order of business is the approval of minutes from the June fourth, two thousand and twenty-five Election Board meeting. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Commissioner Pries, second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now's the call for public comment on agenda items only. Is there any public comment on agenda items only? Hearing none. Mr. Spackman.
We have the first certification of the votes cast in the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five municipal election. First, thank you and your staff for the extraordinary job that you did once again in this general election, and we appreciate all of the efforts of the volunteers and the workers. And we have certainly one of the model election bureaus in the state of Pennsylvania. We appreciate your effort. So, Mr. Spack.
Thank you. Good morning to the Board of Elections. As has been my practice, before requesting that you sign off on the first certification of the results on the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five municipal election, I'd like to summarize a few of the numbers of interest for you. Turnout for voting, based on ballots cast, we know there were eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eleven voters, or a turnout of forty-two percent, which is high for a municipal election. For comparison, the average turnout from municipal elections between two thousand and nine and two thousand and twenty-three was twenty-eight percent. So again, forty-two percent this recent one, general average of twenty-eight. So definitely a high turnout. For provisional ballots, there were four hundred and thirty-three provisional ballots cast, of which three hundred and eight were counted in full, sixty-seven were partially counted due to the voter being out of district, and fifty-eight were rejected. Write-ins are still being counted, and once completed, a list will be posted on the Bureau's website, hopeful by this Friday is my goal. In races where there were tie votes, we'll be conducting a tiebreaker drawing next week following final certification. There's a lot of races where there was only two, two write-ins for a candidate, so a couple ties. Some, some races, there's only one vote for multiple ties. So we'll have a lot of those next week. If there's no questions, I respectfully request that the Board of Elections provide first certification of the results from the Dauphin County Municipal Election held on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Before adjournment, as a reminder, we will meet again next week, November nineteenth, for final certification.
I'd entertain a motion for the first certification of the votes cast on the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five municipal election.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Pries. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it.
You want to sign?
Yes.
Anything to add, Mr. Spackman?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open up the public comment. Please state your name. And remember, we are being live-streamed.
Thank you. Tom Connolly, three forty-five North Harrisburg Street, Swannar Township. I'm going to keep it real simple today. I'm going to give one example. Before I do that, I want to talk about information that's on the Elections' website. All candidates get it, packs, and it shows that there's something called a Cycle Ten reporting period, starts May sixth, goes through May twentieth, and there is a Cycle Eleven, October twenty-first, and goes to November fourth. I've come here before with sixty pages of questionable campaign finance report that clearly shows violations. In an election that we just had, where there was a diverse, diverse slate of candidates in both parties, I've come here and been told by six white males, Mr. Hagerty entered into the fray, the District Attorney, the three of you, and Mr. Spack, that things aren't wrong. I'm just asking for that in writing, because when I went to the Department of State and showed them the examples of what were wrong, they said I should come back here, let you guys know. So that's not going to happen. But I just want to point something out. In an election with a diverse slate of candidates, winning candidates, losing candidates, six white men were responsible for this election. I'm not saying that one vote is wrong, that anything was wrong there, but from the very beginning, there were rules, and everyone got the rules. You three are candidates. Today, you're Election Board. You know the rules. I pointed out that Mr. Hartwick has followed the rules on the twenty-four-hour reporting period. But I'm going to come tell you something today. In, in the most recent report, the Chair of Lower Paxton, who I know nothing bad about, I believe her name is Laura Kurtz, but it's Friends of LK, she got, in the twenty-four-hour reporting, Cycle Eleven, one thousand, forty-one dollars and two cents. Not going to say who it's from, private donor, great for her. Then she got five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-one cents. Ten twenty-eight, two days. They fall within the Cycle Eleven. And this is going to be the curveball. You know what that honorable leader of Lower Paxton and candidate did? She reported them in a twenty-four-hour report, and amazingly, it was accepted by the same Elections Board that did nothing about one on May eighth, twelve hundred dollars, Michael Tuckey donated in the first Cycle Eleven, May sixth, two thousand and twenty. There are three outstanding reports from May that were never filed. How can it be a free and fair election if the candidates aren't playing under the same rules? Ironically, this was a Republican primary. This was a Republican primary, and then you have a Republican who, who seated, unfortunately, the, the young lady lost the election, following the rules. So what I'm going to do is post these things one at a time. I know I overwhelmed everybody when I sent sixty pages, but this came off of the, the site that you guys oversee. And for this gentleman to tell me as a Democrat or elected official, I shouldn't pursue justice for people in the county, that's absolutely wrong. So hopefully, we can do better, but I, I will post it, and I would like a report so I can move it to the next level.
I did email you in writing explanations for the examples you provided last week. Maybe you haven't seen it yet.
I will hand you in writing the examples I have today.
I would recommend submitting these to the Pennsylvania Department of State if you believe that further investigation is necessary.
All right, all right. Come on. Any other public comment? This is just elections. Any more public comment related to elections? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Really quickly before we do that, I just want to make sure, I want to thank you, Director Spackman, for all your hard work during, and your team's hard work. I, I was there a little bit on election night. You guys do a really fantastic job. I know this entire board has seen the work and effort that you guys put in. And I just also want to say to the public, um, seeing the trend of, of turnout going from an average of twenty-eight percent to forty-two percent, it's really, uh, something that, uh, I'm, I'm happy to see. I'm happy to see more people getting involved in our democracy and participating. So just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
And I just want to follow that up with, again, great job by Chris Spackman and his team, best in the state of Pennsylvania as far as running elections in a timely and efficient manner. And follow-up, Commissioner Douglas said about the voter turnout, forty-two percent, that's a great number, but that still means that fifty-eight percent of the electorate did not vote. So half the people took the time to vote and made decisions, but fifty-eight percent, almost sixty percent, didn't. So we need to, we still need to get better. I mean, it should be a hundred percent turnout. Thousands and thousands of Americans have died over the years for our right to vote, and for that number to still be that paltry with mail is, uh, is, is a significant disappointment. So hopefully, it continues to rise.
Thank you. Anything additional from either Commissioner?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Move on to Directors and Guests. We'll begin with Salary Board Cassie Shinsky.
Good morning. There is no Salary Board packet this week, and there's no personnel items that need voted on this week either.
Any questions of Cassie?
None for me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was distributed on Monday. Everything will be ready for your approval next week. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Davis?
My usual question. Everything contained herein is within the budgeted twenty, twenty-five numbers to date. Yeah, we're not aware of any budgetary issues with what's in the packet. Thank you.
Just reminding folks, our budget hearing again are ongoing. A lot of work still needs to be done. A lot of work still to be done. So I look forward to continuing those tomorrow, and then the hard work of what lies ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Court Report, Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are only two items on today's agenda for your consideration. First, an agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management to perform a free analysis of our fleet utilization to hopefully identify opportunities for cost savings, and a fifteen million dollar revenue anticipation note with M and T Bank to help pay human service employee salaries while the state budget impasse and federal government shutdown continue. Given the news that broke last night that there appears to be agreement on a state budget deal and a vote is anticipated today, I'm recommending that we table the line of credit for one week in order to potentially avoid unnecessarily incurring any fees and see if the state budget is in fact adopted today. Additionally, the NICE Systems Software Services contract remains in former business. If the Board would prefer to adopt the originally proposed five-year term instead of the two-year term as initially listed on the agenda, it should be amended to read. Agreement between Dauphin County District Attorney and NICE Systems Incorporated for Software Services, five-year term, eight hundred and ten thousand and fifty-four dollars. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Yes, for the record, that NICE system is utilized by various municipal police departments who are in full support of this continually.
That's my understanding, yes.
Any other questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none. Solicitors Report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. The matters appearing on the agenda today requiring Board approval have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Training Packet, I don't believe we have a training packet before us today for, for approval, or do we? Oh, sorry, I don't, I don't have a copy. I apologize. I could just get a brief glimpse of it before we...
Okay, thank you.
Entertain a motion for a Training Packet.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Pries, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Matters requiring Board action. I'll entertain a motion to table item number two for the purposes that was stated by the Chief Clerk.
Second.
We need, we need a motion.
Well, I said I'd entertain a motion. Motion.
Right. I will second.
Motion made by Commissioner Pries, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Just that I remain a cynic, and until I see a state budget, I think this is a prudent move for a number of reasons, but let's hope that the reports aren't the same as they were last week and the week before. Let's hope we actually have a state budget so our employees and those who we serve are not continued to be held hostage.
I echo Commissioner Hartwick's cynicism, but hopefully, we're in a different position next week. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to table item number two. Item number one before us, agreement between Dauphin County and Enterprise Fleet Management. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to thank Enterprise Fleet Management for coming to the table and, and offering to provide this analysis for us. It could be a potential cost savings of, of a considerable amount of money on an annual basis.
And I'm, I'm hopeful for it to be a cost savings as well. I think it has some potential. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. To former business, the first order of business, if we desire to, would be to amend this contract to read five years at eight hundred and ten thousand, fifty-four dollars. Is there a motion to amend?
I make a motion to amend the agreement between Dauphin County's District Attorney and NICE Systems Inc. for the software services for a five-year term.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, we have a motion made by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Pries. Just to be clear, the five-year term and the motion maker is an agreement of eight hundred and ten thousand, fifty-four dollars?
That's what it is.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Any discussion?
Um, the only discussion is, you know, in our budget hearings, we've had discussions with our IT department in ensuring that we have some level of accountability and a process by which we can examine future investments into software projects. What becomes difficult in county government is when each individual elected official department come back with the newest and latest software initiatives. That seems to have all the bells and whistles, but I want to make it clear that, you know, we need to have a, a way to be able to vet these, because at the end of the day, both costs, future maintenance, the ability to solve those issues are going to fall back on the county regardless of those bells and whistles and what is being promised in the sale. So I'm hopeful, and I've been pressing to see a, a committee established to be able to ensure that we've got a layer of separation between folks making these decisions and bringing them to the Board of Commissioners versus what's going to be required from an IT and an oversight perspective. So I'm moving this today in anticipation that those things will be accomplished so we can avoid future things, future software programs being brought to the table without a level of consideration for all of the impacts.
Any further discussion? We have a motion from Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Pries to amend the item in former business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we do need to act on that item that has now been amended. We have a motion for action.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business? Commissioners' comments, Commissioner Hartwick.
I just, at first, want to make sure that I wish all families, veterans, and those who have served this great nation a happy Veterans' Day. I want to thank you for your service, sacrifice in many ways, paying the ultimate sacrifice for being able to continue to protect our freedoms and the liberty we enjoy in this country. We don't take you for granted. We believe that the celebration of you should happen every day, but yesterday was the day that we've participated in Veterans' Day. And on that line, I know yesterday at the Civil War Museum, I know Commissioner Pries was with me, as well as a number of other elected officials who joined the African-American Civil War Museum and Memorial for the National Reading of the Names, honoring the brave men who served the United States Color Troop during the Civil War. More than fourteen hundred names were read from the Eighth United States Color Troops, a regiment raised at Camp William Penn in Philadelphia. Together, we paid tribute to over two hundred thousand African-Americans who served our great nation with courage and conviction in the fight for freedom. It was an honor to personally take part in the ceremony and read the names of these extraordinary men whose service and sacrifice shaped our nation's history. Their legacy continues to inspire future generations. Thank you.
Commissioner Pries.
Yeah, I want to follow up with what George said. That was a very moving ceremony. I'm glad I was able to participate in it with elected officials and community members from around the region, as we read those names, and it was a very somber event, as we reflected upon all those individuals who have served. And as I'd mentioned, thousands of Americans have, have given their lives for our right to vote. And again, that forty-two percent turnout, even though it's a record turnout, it's still fifty-eight percent from where it needs to be. Thank you.
For my Commissioner comments this week, I'd Uh, for my, uh, Commissioner comments this week, I just wanna, uh, thank, uh, those who helped organize and put together the, uh, Veterans Breakfast in Northern Dauphin, um, that, uh, Commissioner Priest and I were able to attend, and, um, also want to, uh, acknowledge that we had a prison town hall, uh, this past, this week, um, which was, uh, a, a great time to hear from the C JAB, uh, Criminal Justice Advisory Board on their point-in-time study in the jail, uh, which just basically gives, you know, on this particular time in Dauphin County Prison, here's all the statistics, and they go really deep into that. That is available online for those who maybe weren't able to participate and want to go kind of research some of that, that data and learn more about our prison population and the metrics there. Uh, as Commissioner Hartwick, uh, mentioned earlier with the budgets and the hearings, uh, we, we had budget hearings on Wednesday and on, uh, Monday, and those are available online, and I believe we have one tomorrow at one P M, I believe is the time that we, we begin, so you're welcome to join here in this room if you wanna be in person, or you all can also join online to participate, uh, and in that. With that, uh, correspondence will be received by the Chief Clerk's Office, disseminated as needed. Um, getting public participation names signed up. Um, there is one person signed up. Uh, Gene, you'll, you'll kick us off, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the room. Uh, so Gene Stilp, and it'll be a, just so everyone's aware, it's three minutes, and you need to state your name prior to starting, and we are being livestreamed. Welcome, Gene. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Gene.
Uh, let's go back, uh, I'm sorry, Gene Stilp from Fish Creek Valley. Um, let's go ahead in time to the year two thousand forty-five. This two thousand forty-five, Three Mile Island has restarted for twenty years. Unit still is totally not cleaned up yet. Unit one is just entering into the seventy-year decommissioning phase, just like the one that had originally started in two thousand twenty but was postponed by the restart. I won't be around to bother you anymore, anymore. Everyone in government, the county level from two thousand twenty-five is no longer anywhere to be found. You are being redr- redypped in some nursing home, and yes, the seven hundred ton, sorry, gentlemen.
Thank you. This is entertaining. Keep going.
I'm glad he won't be there. And yes, the seven hundred tons of high-level waste from seventy-four to seven, twenty nineteen is still there, but has been added to the, had, has been added to about twenty years of high-level waste that was caused by the restart. Now, over a thousand tons sits there, the most poisonous material on earth left over forever here in Dauphin County. The feds still have no story solution. Elon Musk is probably, his company's probably gonna send it to the sun. What does that perspective mean for now? It means that the people here now have to stand up and realize the federal government hasn't and won't do a damn thing about it. The state government is still inept, providing any solutions or leadership to force the feds to act. The local government, that means you, are very elected to act and oppose a forceful position that protects future generations from having to deal with the immense problem. Let's turn to the morality of the situation. A massive amount of, a massive environmental problem is about to be allowed, uh, to not only continue but actually grow, and you are letting that happen. Talk about a super, super fun site, you're basically doing nothing to protect the future of Dauphin County in this regard. The government of D C is cutting back on protective nuclear regulations at the N R C. FEMA's got it. The last thing to defend is you, you three. You have a moral obligation to stand in the way. Yes, it is, is that question, is a question of your vision and morality. Don't take my word for it. Go talk to your spiritual advisors or other advisors. If you won't be moral, be practical. They're, they want a continuous waste dump in Dauphin County. They have to send, uh, they have to send a hundred million dollars to the county right now. No money, no restart. If you're going to be immoral enough to sell out the people here and their environmental future, then be practical enough to get something out of it. If you're not, if you're going to be morally bankrupt, you must as well be at extortion and go after constellation. What do you have to do? Sorry for pinches on your character, but you have to see responsibility in those seats is a moral, in a moral light. Let those in nineteen, in two thousand twenty, two thousand forty-five see that you acted to stop a moral disaster in two thousand twenty-five. You have the ability, the vision, to see what I'm presenting. Now, do you have the backbone to stand up to the massive powers and constellation of MAGA SAP? I think if you look deeply, you'll find the wisdom, character, and inner strength to stop this ongoing, um, this ongoing and future disaster, as Walder Cronkite said, and that's the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Just to be clear, you're saying at sixty-one, I'm gonna be in a nursing home getting my diaper changed?
Once again.
At sixty-one, I'm gonna be in the nursing home getting my diaper changed, is what you said.
You're gonna leave a tough, tough, next twenty years a tough life, okay? Hey, well, I can say it all, it all depends.
I appre- I appreciate the levity you bring to a serious topic, Gene. Thank you so much. Uh, anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.